Really? Well, I mean, if the system's going off.
We'll call a meeting in order at five thirty-five. We have the approval of the minutes of the meeting of January the fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January fourth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for January the fourth, twenty twenty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carried. Number three, subdivision and land development.
A time ex-
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, could we just clarify the membership for this evening for alternates versus full-time members? How many full-time members do we have on the commission tonight? Okay, four, so we're in need of one voting alternate. Who hasn't voted in a while?
I did it last time, so you go ahead, Tony.
Okay, in that case, can we just clarify the vote for, who cast their vote for the approval of the minutes?
In that case, I vote aye.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, I'll just let the record reflect that. Thank you, and forget everything that we just said, because I think we have a fifth full-time voting member now.
Okay. Welcome. Number three, subdivision land development. A time extension for final land development plan at two fifteen North Queen Street. On behalf of two fifteen Queen Street Partner LLC. A groups incorporated request a time extension to meet the conditions of approval for two fifteen North Queen Street. Final land development until January the sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Chair, I'll just provide some brief comments on this, and do we have a representative for this project in the room this evening? No, okay. So, this, this is a land development that the commission approved at the end of twenty twenty-one. Just to orient you briefly, this is a vacant lot on the two-hundred block next to the Red Rose Transit parking garage structure. Some years ago, there was a building there that collapsed and was demolished during the construction of the garage. So, it's been a vacant lot for some time. And I know our police bureau has been using it for canine training and a variety of other things. But there is an approved land development there for a five-story structure for residential and commercial on the ground floor. It was approved with thirteen different conditions. The project has been fairly silent over the last year or so, but they've asked for a time extension to permit them to continue to meet conditions of approval and eventually record the land development. So, at this time, staff is recommending that the time extension be granted as approved. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Why is a year necessary? I'm not regarding like the conditions of approval that are outstanding that are still yet to be met. Do you think that that's going to require a full twelve months?
To be honest, I, it's hard for me to speak to it in great detail, because I, maybe I can actually defer it to Mr. Kajo in case we have any other details on why the extension is needed. Did they provide any other info? So, just for those, if they're listening online, it's due to an easement agreement between the transit authority and the, this landowner. So, the back of the building exits out onto the transit authority's land, or the back door, I think, is actually technically on their land. But in order to exit the rear of the building, they have to actually move through the transit authority's land. This was a part of the design challenge for the property, and it sounds like those easements haven't yet been executed. So, the idea is that they can either exit out on Christian Street, near the building formerly known as the village, through that gate there. And that's what they have shown in the plan, is to use that, that gated area. So, I don't know whether a year is needed or not, it's hard for me to say, that's what they've requested. I don't think, you know, planning staff isn't opposed to that. If the commission is more amenable to a shorter time, you know, maybe a minimum of six months. But I'll leave that up for, up to you.
I think we should let them have the year, so they have as much time as possible to get this done. And if they come back to us asking for another extension, then there's, I don't see why we would at that point. But, you know, we're talking about a really unusable lot, or relatively unusable, and I would like to see this project happen personally.
I will say, one complicating factor is that if two oh two North Queen begins construction, which is at the corner of Queen and Chestnut, it will be nearly infeasible to construct this building during that construction period. Because two oh two will be taking up about a lane's width on Queen Street, and a lane's width on Chestnut Street in order to have enough room to drop a crane and actually build the, the twelve-story tower that's planned there. So, a year from my perspective, it may not be a bad idea, only because they may not be able to even construct actually for a little bit of time. The other challenge, as we all know, is the, the environment around financing has really changed. And so, I know some other projects that have approval are still working to secure their, their financing completely. So, yeah, I welcome other questions or thoughts on that, though.
What's the timeline of the construction at two oh two?
If I remember correctly, it's about an eighteen-month process, and they are hoping to begin, I think, in February. I mean, they were looking to start very soon. They're still working on just a couple of last, final conditions of approval. But they're, they're very close to being able to record the plan and be ready to pull building permits.
Any other comments from the commission? Public comments? Hearing none.
I would like to make a motion to approve the time extension for the final land development plan for two fifteen North Queen Street, extended to January sixteenth of twenty twenty-four.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carried. B, final land development plan for PCAD Housing Project at two twenty-three North Water Street. Pennsylvania College of Art and Design proposes forty-three individual bedroom student housing along with three classrooms and a three thirty-five fifty-three SF of commercial space on the existing vacant Chameleon Club. The project also includes a second-floor one thousand forty SF addition and wheelchair lift at Prince Street entrance.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't have a lot to offer on, on this one, other than that, I'll, no, staff is supportive of approving. There's some conditions that we can go over, but I welcome just maybe a high-level overview of the project from the development team who's present tonight. Excuse me, sir, there's just a button on that mic, if you could press that, the light will turn red, and then you can speak.
Can everybody hear me? There we go. Matthew Mack from Mack Engineering, Lanisville, PA. With me also is the architect, Ellen Stolzfuß. These are basically interior renovations at the Chameleon Club. They're going to convert it over to student housing. There's a planned commercial space in the lower area, yet to be determined, we're planning for it, but we're not sure if it's going to happen. On the Prince Street side, we have some accessibility additions that we have to add, chairlifts, some ramps, those items. We are planning on demoing the Water Street all-new curb and sidewalk. And on the North Prince Street side, a small portion of existing curb that's damaged, and then all-new curb and sidewalk with your brick facade that you guys like to have. We've secured planning module approval for this from DEP. We have some minor comments with staff yet to resolve. There was one deferral we'd like to ask for. As part of staff's request in your saldo, it requires us to secure addresses currently. We're still trying to figure out if the, if the post office is just going to have one address there, and then PCAT distributes it internally to the students, or if they're going to have forty-three individual boxes. It's yet to be determined, we submitted a deferral request to staff for that. So, we want to meet the intent, we're just not ready yet to meet the intent, until it's such time that PCAT has a little bit more time to figure that out. Besides that, we are fine with all of the conditions. We will add the bike rack, one item request was to add a bike rack for the commercial use. Once we determine that commercial use will go in there, we'll add a note to these sets of plans that will depict the proposed bike rack location and denote once a commercial use, if a commercial use is, ends up going in, that the bike rack will be added.
The commercial space is actually on Prince Street.
And could you state your name, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Eldon Stolzfuß, the architect. The commercial space may be used as classroom or additional housing units. We don't have that space permitted yet, and we're not planning on permitting that until they get a tenant or decide what to use with that space. So, at that point is when we would put the bike rack, if there is a commercial use, on that, on the Prince Street side.
We've also secured approval from Harb, Shetree Commission, and the other commission you guys, you guys are our last stop, basically, for approval. So, if you have, guys have any questions, I'll entertain anything you guys have, but it's a pretty simple project, and I think it's going to be a great addition to the city.
I have two questions. First one, have you considered the lift to also be, to be on the Water Street side, or was it always planned for the Prince Street side?
On the Water Street side, we have accessible entrance already. It comes in at grade, in fact, there's two locations that come in at grade, there's one that has an internal ramp, and the other comes in right at the, right at the main lobby area, which is all at grade. Unfortunately, on Prince Street side, that was built some time ago, and there were steps up. And if we build the commercial space, the lift would be needed mainly for the commercial space, because the students, the, the commercial, the people that have the commercial space can't go back through the building to the elevator to get out to Water Street. So, that's the reason for the lift, and secondarily, students who want to exit, let's say there's a person in a wheelchair, they want to exit to the Prince Street side, they could then use the lift to get out. But the other Water Street side, we don't need a lift, but that was, that was the intent.
And what other student housing projects have you all worked with?
I'm just turned sixty-seven, so you're really taxing my memory here. I, I did a lot of work with student housing back in the nineties. When I was asked to do this project, the main reason was because I had done a lot of renovation work and restoration work. And so, this building was, with the structure and everything else, was a real challenge to get the student housing fitted in. But I've done numerous affordable housing projects in buildings like this, where we retrofitted them, tax credits, historic tax credits, all of those things, so I have a vast background on that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, one last item, I'm sorry. So, we're requesting a deferral, and from my understanding, this is my first project in the city. There's a three hundred dollar fee for any waivers. To save PCAT some cost, would the board entertain not requiring, it's because it's a deferral, we're not, we're, intent is to meet the intent, but not to waive it. So, staff said that we possibly could ask you guys to entertain that if possible, if not, we'll pay the fee, but since I'm here, I'll try to ask you guys for that.
Is this related to the unit addresses?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll just, to put a finer point on that, one of the challenges that we've encountered with plan approvals is our ordinance requires that unit addresses be shown on the plans. Sometimes plans get recorded, and then there's some change either in the number of units, or there's some reason that the units have to be renumbered, maybe after correspondence with, you know, various parties. And so, then, we actually, when we establish addresses, we send out communications to the Lancaster Countywide Communication Services, which sends it to EMS and police and others and the USPS. So, once we assign those addresses, they're, they're pretty fixed, and when they get changed later on in the midst of building or submitting a building permit, that can be problematic. So, we're moving towards, I think, a system where we actually prefer to assign the addresses at the time of building permit, rather than at the time of plan approval. So, you know, staff is supportive of, of the waiver of the fee, and I think you'll probably be encountering this more often until we can change the ordinance to actually remove the requirement for the addresses.
Any other questions from the commission? From the public? Hearing none.
I move to approve the final land development plan for PCAD Housing Project at two twenty-three North Water Street with the conditions and recommendations from the city planners.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, eyes have it, motion carried.
Thank you, everyone. The, do we need a separate motion for the fee or no? No, excellent. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
We included that as part of the recommendation to the commission, so as long as the commission doesn't feel like that's necessary, I think I gathered it was included in the motion, okay.
That's fine, that's fine.
Thanks for clarifying, yeah.
Sure.
Have a good night.
Number four, redevelopment authority of the city of Lancaster. The city reinvestment board has forward five oh six Beaver Street for certification of blight.
I'm sorry, just one moment. So, this property was condemned in twenty twenty due to a fire and has been unimproved since twenty twenty, December twenty-sixth of twenty twenty. It was presented to the property reinvestment board in twenty twenty-two. It was blighted by the property reinvestment board on November tenth of twenty twenty-two. However, the, looks like there was an incorrect ad posting which delayed. Ms. Super, is there anything you wanted to add on this, because I know you've been at the property reinvestment board, happy to also include any comments from you.
No, I mean, other than the property being, you know, structurally unsound and dilapidated in nature, the fire damage is extensive throughout, and the, the building is just deteriorating, so it, it's ready to proceed as, along the process.
I have the folder of all the communications here, just documenting when certified letters were sent out to owners. I mean, the, the building is in dire condition, unfortunately. Holes in the roof, there's rain getting in, front windows are busted out, and there's overdue utilities and property, I'm sorry, just utilities that are overdue on the property. It looks like there, we may not have a current address for the, the owner as well, and building permits haven't been pulled or executed on. So, unfortunate situation, city staff is recommending that the, the commission certify the property as blighted, so it can go on to the redevelopment authority for further consideration.
Any other questions from the commission? Public comment? Yes.
I will make a motion to certify five oh six Beaver Street as a blighted property.
A second.
So, we have a motion to certify blight for five oh six Beaver Street. Ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carried. Comprehensive plan update?
Mr. Chairman, there's really not much of a comprehensive plan update, as I said before, we're in the midst of writing a lot of policy. And so, we have some significant text, actually, that we're reviewing and, with staff and some community partners right now. And again, I'll just mention that on, on May tenth, at the Ware Center, we hope to, we're planning an event to showcase some of the writing of that comprehensive plan and move towards adoption later this year. So, we're still hunkered down and writing, and there's not a lot that's going on in the public eye at the moment. We're synthesizing all of that community engagement feedback that we got, and look forward to reporting out to the community and getting additional input at that time. The, the one outreach piece that we are working on, because it's been a little bit more complex to coordinate, is we're working with Church World Service to conduct three different meetings. Our hope is to engage between twenty and thirty people at each of those three meetings in three different languages. So, Church World Services has been hired as our, our consultant to communicate with these groups, since they have good lines of communication and trust. And we hope to learn a little bit more from the refugee and new American population that's in the city, and just what their experiences have been with various city services. in the city and just what their experiences have been with various city services. And then that will also be incorporated into our, our comprehensive plan policy. And that's been a, a long running goal of ours, but initiating it was complicated. So we brought in Church World Service to help facilitate those connections. So I can provide an update on that at a future meeting.
I have a question, Douglas. Is the hiring of those services as a result of the feedback in the community engagement surveys and whatnot?
No, I wouldn't say so. I mean, we certainly heard loud and clear from the community that it was important that we created an inclusive process. We've also heard from a lot of partners that we've succeeded in doing that. And our, you know, our numbers and the diversity of interactions we've had, I think, really reflect that. But city staff just felt it was very important to continue to push as much as we could on that and make sure that, you know, we were truly delivering that, that inclusive process for, for all. We had connected with those groups and invited them into various meetings, but without proper accommodations for language translation, in some cases, you know, childcare and food to make sure that we're getting families there, we just didn't feel like we were hitting all, all of the targets that we really wanted to. So, so we're, you know, I think trying to go the extra mile. And we have done, a number of our resources have been published in multiple languages, not just English and Spanish, but Swahili as well. And I know the city and its social media work has taken up, translating into Swahili as well, because it's actually the next most requested language service that we have in the city after Spanish.
Thank you.
Sure.
Douglas, the event at the Ware Center, did you have a time on that? Is that like a public, public notice yet or?
We don't yet. This is sort of an early save the date notice. It'll be late afternoon into the evening. We want to make sure that people, you know, who are working during the day can get there. Maybe people who are working during the night can show up early enough before shift. So we're trying to strike the right balance, but we, we don't have time set. I, I've reserved the Ware Center right now from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM and hope to narrow that down later on. Thank you for asking.
Okay.
So I know that we're intending on presenting May 10th. Will we see any of these documents prior to May 10th or is that going to be when we also get introduced to them?
Can I get back to you on that? I don't know the exact order of how that's going to roll out. The commission will be the place where the, the draft document is, you know, it'll, it'll be the first public meeting that it's presented at. I don't know how that aligns exactly with the May 10th date yet.
Okay.
So, you know, I think I mentioned before, we're hoping, instead of designing a completely separate public outreach process, we're hoping to really move people towards the Planning Commission as the venue for further dialogue so that you all as recommending commissioners to city council on the plan can hear directly from residents who may have concerns so, or want to advocate for something. So stay tuned on that, but I imagine you'll be hearing a lot more about the comp plan before adoption.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Other business, short-term rental zoning discussion?
Okay, that's me again. So last meeting, the commission began discussions on possible zoning amendments for, for short-term rentals in particular. Just to, again, a very, very brief recap, last year in April, city council adopted new zoning legislation for short-term rentals. And the city administration made a commitment to revisit those regulations after we had worked through some of the administration and enforcement of the new regulations. So this is that opportunity to do that. And at the meeting last week, city staff provided just a very basic overview of that timeline. I mentioned a little bit about how many units were in operation versus compliant and not. I think the, I don't have the exact numbers committed in memory, but there are roughly 200 units that were operating when I reported out the other week. And 70 of the units were zoning compliant. 140 of those 200 units had addresses identified. So roughly half of the units that we have begun correspondence with, half of them have become compliant and the other half are in some stage of either enforcement or compliance. It varies. We've sent out a new round of letters in the last couple of weeks to continue that enforcement process after the holidays concluded. Simultaneously, we've begun looking at the code again and the two recommendations that, or not recommendations yet, but the two zoning policies that I had provided to the Planning Commission are, one was to remove the, or clarify the parking requirement for homestays. And homestay is when the homeowner is actually living in the structure and renting one or two of the rooms as a, a short-term rental. And currently, it's ambiguous and one unit could require one space and two units also one space. So we want to clarify, one unit for a homestay does not require a space and, oh, I should say one bedroom, and two bedrooms for a homestay does require one space. The zoning hearing board has been providing, has granted variances in accordance with that recommendation from city staff. The second provision is much more conceptual, but I think the idea was for the commission and city staff to look at how short-term rental units could function above a commercial use and in what districts that might, might be permissible. You might recall that we eliminated R3 and R4 as zoning districts where short-term rentals were allowed. So currently, it's our commercial districts, downtown, the mixed use and the C1 and C2 districts where short-term rentals are allowed. So, you know, one possibility is those districts remain the same, but an apartment, which is specifically one or two units above a commercial use, could be permissible as, as a short-term rental. The, the balance that we're trying to strike and, you know, I encourage you all to give further consideration to is being mindful of multifamily structures flipping into short-term rentals or losing significant rental stock in the multifamily buildings. So I don't know that this is necessarily the exact place we're going to end up, but I just wanted to kind of paint the picture, let you know what the challenge is and what we're trying to achieve. And, and yeah, the zoning code does define apartments uniquely. It's different from a three-story or three-unit structure. So anyway, with that, I know that we have some residents here who came to speak on this matter in particular. I didn't provide a formal presentation tonight because I thought it might be helpful to hear from some folks that we've been in correspondence with so that you can get other perspectives and hear from residents. So I'm happy to answer any quick questions or if you want to invite folks up to the podium, that's okay too.
From the commission? Go ahead.
So not so much, well, I guess there is a question in this. I actually have some concerns about reducing the parking to zero for one bedroom. And part of why is because I remember living on North Plum Street and having one extra car on the street at night can really make a huge difference in whether you're parking on North Plum Street or if you're finding parking elsewhere. I do think that there needs to be some consideration to like potentially whether or not this is in a permit parking area to allow that sort of exception to have no parking needed. But the question I suppose I have is, could we invite Mr. Cohen to Planning Commission to give us some understanding of parking in the City of Lancaster? Because currently, you know, some neighborhoods are so tight that we're making parking spaces where technically there's not supposed to be one, like at the curbs. And I think we should get a, an understanding of what are parking that's in use, like what that capacity is and what technically exists legally and what it should, should be. Because while I'm a fan of reducing parking minimums overall, I do think this specific business model is parking intensive because you're bringing in people from potentially all over the world even. And I suspect that most people who use a short-term rental will be driving into Lancaster. So with, with this certain use, I think that we need to have a better understanding of the parking capacity of the city and where it's tight before we just say maybe a homestay doesn't need any parking accommodation at all. Those are my thoughts on the matter.
Anyone else in the commission? Public comments? Can approach the podium?
Good evening, my name is Bob Shank and I sit on the zoning hearing board. And for the last year, year and a half, you know, any given month, there's at least two or three people requesting a short-term rental. Now lately, it's been, trying to come lately, people, oh, they know the ordinance exists, they thought they'd take their shot. They come up with all kinds of stories dealing with how much money I've spent, I need the extra income, whatever it is. And we routinely say no. And that really is coming from an unofficial, maybe urging from the city side to say no. Because I think one of the first ones we did, we said yes, and that was appealed. And I think that was turned down or they lost in court. I think so, I didn't follow it. But anyway, the bottom line on that one is everybody ended up spending a lot of money with attorneys, including the city. So I think that's where we are today. I think when you consider revising this ordinance, I think it's very mindful of you to consider the good people who have had Airbnb, what it used to be, well, I guess it used to be transient on the application form back in 2015 or even earlier. And I remember I used to own one and I, at that time, I, I think I even talked to Randy Patterson, but he did say in the paper that the city has no regulations on this stuff. So, okay, fine, so just keep on going. Now, I think these people who have been, have had short-term rentals, they didn't used to be called short-term rentals for many, many years, are being thrown under the bus. I agree that parking is an issue. I, I think that parking should be provided based on number of bedrooms or occupants or what, however you come up with that. But I do think that the responsible citizens of this city who own these and operate these for many, many years, need to deserve a break. And I really think this really came into a head because some guy from Colorado, I think, moved in, paid above market value, set about making all kinds of construction changes and started renting. I'm told that there were about 100 citations against him, but then they were pulled back because this solicitor didn't think it was airtight or something, I don't know what the status of that is. So again, you know, we're just spending all this money on, on legal fees and, and staff time to enforce all this stuff. And so I guess it's a good thing that the city got their hands on a third-party software that actually gives, gives the, I guess, I don't know if it gives a name, but it gives an address of any property that's been advertised on one of these vacation sites, not just Airbnb. So I understand that and I think that's, that's a good thing, you know, to get some, a handle on all this stuff because when I had mine and started in 13, there were maybe, there was one other one just like ours in the city, but most of these at that time were out in farm country. And then all of a sudden, the city became the place to be. And our, our guests came from Baltimore, New Jersey. They came for the, the food in the city, the art scene, the music scene. And then of course, they brought the kids for Sight and Sound and Dutch Wonderland and, and all that kind of stuff too. But anyway, so I would just ask, as you think about changing this ordinance, don't make it specific to say a zoning district like R3, R4. And also pay attention to the parking. Because I do think, I agree that parking is an issue in the city. We hear this all the time at the zoning hearing board. It's traffic, parking, stormwater. Of course, we don't, the zoning board doesn't deal with stormwater, but we hear, we hear a lot of that. And so sometimes we come up with some kind of compromise for the applicant, sometimes we say no. So I just think that since you started the discussion last month, I think there's good opportunity here to really clean this thing up. The last thing I'll say about the way we are today with the ordinance that we have, many people, everybody I've talked to, and trust me, I used to live near Shipman. So when all this went down on Shipman with this guy from Colorado, guess who they called? Not the city, they called me. And so I was talking to them. So I, I, I know, I know what they're going through. So I don't think it's fair for responsible citizens who have these short-term rental things for a long time, you know, do the inspections, provide the parking, whatever they do, and are responsible. I don't think it's fair for them to be punished for that just because of a, a bad egg that happened to show up and upset the apple tree. So anyway, that's all I have right now. I might be back next month, I don't know. I just want to keep tabs on what you guys are talking about. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Doreen Landis. I just wanted to just go back on what you were saying about the parking. I get it, we do need to like have some sort of tabs on parking. But if someone has, this is related specifically to the homestay. So if someone has a house and they, they live in it and they want to rent out a room or two, I just don't know how that's different because someone's going to be living anywhere, there anyway, whether it's a, a child, an adult child that has a car or, you know, a roommate. For example, for example, I live on West Chestnut Street and my neighbor next door, both the parents have a car and they have two adult children that live in that house and they each have a car. So there's four cars per that household. So if, if their kids move out and they decide to do a homestay, one or two bedrooms, it's still going to be the same amount of cars. So I just don't understand how it's going to really change it on average.
So the reason I made the comments I did and I appreciate your example is because I think there is already a predetermined amount of on-street parking that properties are grandfathered in. I don't know if it's one or two spaces off the top of my head, but the example you're giving is, speaks to the fact that we live in a car-centric society and I get that. The, the concern I have is that, you know, regardless if those kids move out then, I mean, we're still filling the neighborhood then with cars that are not necessarily of our residence and our residents currently are struggling to find parking. So my concern is that by reducing the minimum from one to zero for a one-bedroom, even though it's just one bedroom, that's still one car, maybe two adults have come into the city and they've both driven in. So that's why I'm trying to be aware of like, is there permit parking? What is the conditions of the parking in the city right now? I, I think it could cause problems. I don't want to, I don't want to see families necessarily have four-car households. I grew up in a household that had many cars. But that, that's where I'm speaking from personally.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, is it feasible to consider or humor a conversation regarding parking requirements for short-term rentals and make that, you know, zone-dependent? Like for instance, if you're in the Central Business District, if you're a commercial property or if you're, you know, developing multifamily, you know, apartment building in Central Business District, parking is not required. So what if we took that same similar concept and looked at how we could apply that to a short-term rental property? So pending the location may influence what that parking requirement is or is not?
So just, I might need to clarify the question a little bit. I'll just, maybe just add some information and then you can let me know whether I'm on or off target or not. So in the Central Business District, they still wouldn't have to provide any parking with either homestay or a short-term rental. with either a homestay or a short-term rental. To Mr. Dastre's point about grandfathering, one unit is grandfathered one space. You know, it kind of depends on the scenario, right? We go back through the archives. We have zoning decisions that go very far back. And we look at whether there was any spaces or any decisions regarding parking ever made. If there aren't, most single-family homes are grandfathered one space. So if they were to have a home, one homestay, I think our intent when we, when staff wrote and when the commission voted on this last year, we conveyed that if there was one bedroom, there would not be a parking requirement. That's actually what I told you all. You voted on that. In practice, what happened is Jamil Thrash, our zoning officer, when he looked at the code, there's one space for two units. So what we do is we divide the parking spaces in half. So when there's one unit, there's now 0.5 parking spaces. And when it's 0.5, we have to round up to one. The zoning code instructs us to round up. So that's how we got into this bind of requiring one space. And that was never our intention to do that. And I don't think it was your, the commission's intention when they voted on these amendments last year. Not to say we can't reevaluate it, but I just wanted to remind us of, of that. We can definitely look at more context-sensitive parking requirements. For a short-term rental, they would also be grandfathered one space until they get up to four bedrooms, and then they have to begin providing parking spaces, I think, per unit after that. I'll, I'll double-check that to make sure. But you're right, it could depend a lot on the neighborhood and circumstances. I will just say that on-street parking availability does not, has not really factored into off-street parking requirements. And there are a variety of reasons for that, but we don't look at the on-street availability and then determine the parking requirement based on, on, on that. Those parking requirements are applied, you know, across the city, at least as it stands right now. I think undoing that policy is, has some significant implications. Not to say it can't be done, but we would have to be really thoughtful about how we would, how we would rewrite that.
May I ask, are we voting on some, are we voting on this this evening?
No, and that's a great question. Yeah, we're not voting, just a discussion and welcome additional comments. You know, if, if folks would like to come back up and make additional comments, I think we have time to do that. But yeah, maybe let's hear from new folks first. Please.
Hi, guys. I'm Evan Young. I own a commercial property on West King Street, 213 West King Street. We have a retail store called Larkstone. Also in my property, we also have a recording studio, a ballet school, and an architecture firm. And I've been running an Airbnb, a short-term rental above our store. I thought I was okay to do it because the code said "single-family home", and I didn't realize single-family occupancy is not the same thing as single-family home. So, okay, that's my mistake. The place had been vacant for 40 years before I renovated it. It was unusable. I had to get a new occupancy permit. But having it on Airbnb, the revenue that I make off of it really has allowed me to not raise the rents on my commercial tenants. And that's something I'm very proud of. I feel like downtown, as a downtown property owner, my social responsibility is to set up locally-owned businesses that serve our community. I'm, I'm supposed to set them up for success. And, but I own a building that's been neglected for 50 years. I'm dramatically behind on maintenance. I've had it for five years. I've taught myself how to do every type, type of repair. I got myself LED certified. I, I really need the Airbnb money. Like, it's a $1,500 difference between what short-term rental brings in and what the market rate apartment would bring in. And that's $15,000 a year is, is one major problem. So, what would it be? I don't know. Whatever the money is. It's, it's a major problem every year that I can fix. And if I, if I, well, I, I am shut down right now. It just makes it so that I can't continue to fix problems. And I can't continue to set my businesses up for success without raising the rent on them dramatically. And that does have further implications. For example, the architecture firm, Yo, he, he's the guy that does a lot of the work for Habitat for Humanity. He donates half of his, half of his feedback to the organization. I really don't want to raise the rent on them more than I have to. So I think I've made some suggestions to Douglas about, you know, I, I'm very sympathetic to, we don't want to open the box of just being a community flooded with short-term rentals. I think the charm of visiting Lancaster City is that we're an actual community. When you visit here, you can kind of imagine yourself living here, because we're an actual functional community. And that's what I'm trying to do with my store. I'm trying to have a store at Larkstone. It's supposed to be a store that keeps a couple people from having to drive out to the mall. Like, I'm trying to be walkable. Like, I, I love living in a walkable city. I walk to work almost every day. So, anyway, that's kind of the philosophy of what I'm trying to do and why I really want to have a short-term rental. Because, yeah, I think, I think everything should be trying to focus first on the people that live here. Because that would be the most interesting thing. But I don't know how to do a conclusion. I, I set up a thesis, but I don't know if I, if I have a conclusion. So I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Guess I'm not as tall as Evan. Hi, Joel Sims. I own Sims Architects. I also own Lancaster Co-Working, Lancaster Event, 312 East Walnut Street, right down from Lancaster Brewing Company on the left. The property next to me just sold for $8.5 million, I'm excited to say. So we've got some great neighbors coming in next door. I moved here and my wife, I moved my whole life. And when we moved here, my wife said, "How long's it going to be until you want to move again? How long's it going to be?" Because my father moved all the time. And, and I'm like, "I don't know. I can't really tell you." So let me just tell you, it's been 22 years I'm still here. And I don't plan to leave here. But I would say that I'm a lot like Evan. You know, I know Evan. You know, he juggles down in Maryland. He's a really good juggler. And he's a really great guy. And I'm sure if I called him up and said, "Hey, Evan, I, I got, you know, somebody that really is facing hard times, and they need a place for a couple nights. Can you help them out?" He'd be like, "Sure." You know, so what I'm trying to convey is, really, Evan and I and other people that have been denied are really just like you. I had a woman call me, and she said, "I can't believe it. I didn't see the thing in the, you know, the paper. I, I've been going, you know, for three years having an Airbnb. And now I got denied." And she came and she got denied in the appeal. But, and I won't tell you her name, but here's what she did. She called me and she said, "Hey, do you have any furnished apartments? Because I have somebody that's looking." I said, "Yeah, have them call me." So Helen calls me up. She said, "I have a really good friend from elementary school that's moving here from Ukraine, and she needs a place to stay for her husband and her five-year-old daughter." And I said, "Okay, I got a furnished place. You know, you can stay." I didn't ask for references. I didn't ask for credit checks, because I'm like Evan and a lot of other people in the city. We just want to help people. So I didn't think anything was going to happen. And then two weeks ago, she shows up. And with her husband and with her daughter, and I rented them a place. I'm not saying that so you think better of me. I'm saying that because I want you to get a better picture of the people that are doing short-term rentals. You know, we're not, we're not the guy from Colorado. You know, we're not the guy from Nevada. You know, we're not the person from Chicago. I use Nevada and Chicago because I have a son in Chicago and I have a daughter in Nevada. And I think if they came in, you should deny them. You know, but we're, we're trying to make the city a better place. And there's, I'm an architect. I can tell you after 40 years, there's things that I don't really understand about the building code and zoning ordinance. I had no idea. Like, if I would have submitted early on in the process, I would have probably been grandfathered in. But I don't know. I was vacationing or playing with my grandkids or helping a refugee. I don't know. Guy called me yesterday and he said, "Hey", he said, "we want to do a driver's ed for Afghan refugees. Can we use your conference room? And how much is it?" And here again, I'm not trying to promote myself. I'm saying, "I got a conference room. Bring them on." You know? And I know a lot of people in the city would do the same thing. Evan would do it. Other people I know would do it because they love Lancaster City. So I think the proposal to say, "Let's take spaces above commercial spaces." If you've ever been to Anita's on Walnut or the Flying Pig Deli, that's the building I own. I had an attic space that was awful, seven-foot-high ceiling. It was just not going to be good at all. And what did I do? Me, being an architect and not really telling my wife everything, raised it up to 11 feet, put two beautiful apartments in there with a sunken tub, TV that comes down from the ceiling. It's great. I can't rent that out per month. I mean, I just, I mean, if you know somebody that wants to pay $8,000 a month, you know, sure, let me know. But I can't. Did I spend too much money? Yes. Did I make a mistake? Yes. Did I know the city was going to change the regulations? No. I, I just can't. And I said to my wife, "I don't, I don't know what I'm going to do. If the city changes the rules, great. But if they don't, I don't know what to do." And my wife says, "Well, we have a vacation home seven minutes from Mannheim Township we can go to." And, and we have. It's great. I mean, we love coming to the city for the weekends. We brought friends and all. So the changes to the regulations to say, "Let's take spaces above commercial areas that are not, they're not, there's, believe it or not, there's second four spaces. People don't renovate." I'm an architect. I know that. It's too costly. Like, we can't make the numbers, you know, work out charging $1,000 or $1,200 a month. But little-known secret, if you do short-term rental, it's twice that. I'll just tell you because I know. Okay? So now you're taking $1,000 a month. You say, "We can get $2,000 a month." Well, now we can afford to renovate the space above our commercial area. So what is that going to do? It, it's not going to decrease the housing in Lancaster. It's going to increase it. Because people are going to say, "Hey, I've got a space that's just vacant. I can now renovate it, and I can have a space that I can rent out on a short-term basis." So I think to say, one or two apartments in mixed-use or central business district is an incredible idea. And it shows that you're supporting us as business owners, because a lot of us that have commercial spaces with that space, you know, we're business owners. And I just want to reiterate, we're just like you. I mean, we love Lancaster. We love the people. Am I, am I trying to get rich? No. You know, I've earned a lot of money in 40 years, not in architecture. But what do I get excited about? I get excited about helping other people. So if I can make more income on that, you know, it's, yeah, make the conference room available for more refugees. Help somebody else out. Evan's the same way, and I know a lot of other people. They just, they're not trying to get rich and move to Florida. They're trying to make a living and help other people. Why, why does Evan not want to go up on his commercial tenants? If you were a ruthless businessman, he'd be like, you know, "Who cares? Let's go up on the rent. I don't care." But he cares about people. And a lot of business owners in this city really care about people. So I would recommend and fully support Mr. Smith's recommendation to allow short-term rentals in central business district, mixed-use, one or two apartments, not the whole world, not a whole apartment complex, that's above a commercial space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Douglas, I want to get my bearings here. This is all related to the parking thing you mentioned? Or are there other things that I'm missing somewhere?
Sure. Just to recap, at the last meeting, I offered two general recommendations. One was clarifying the parking requirement for homestays. So that, that's the owner-occupied version of a short-term rental. The other suggestion was to perhaps permit some residential units above a commercial use to also be allowed as a short-term rental. This actually requires changing the definition of short-term rental, because right now in the ordinance, a short-term rental has to be a single-family structure. And that's where issues like Mr. Sims and Evans come into play. They have mixed-use properties that are not considered single-family homes. If the, the commercial districts, and specifically the downtown, if they are the right places for short-term rentals, then there aren't a lot of single-family homes that exist in those places. There are some, but it's not like, you know, the R4, R3, you know, other residential neighborhoods. So the thinking is to explore that, that idea more. That brings the use in line with the types of building, the building types and structures that exist in those zones. So I hope that answers your question.
Do you have a sense of how many potential units there would be if we allowed this?
That's a great question. We, we can look into that. I'll have to do a little bit more analysis. That is on, actually on my list of, of things to do. It's a little bit, it may be a little tricky to figure out, but we can try to get a, pick away at that issue. The challenge is, we have our zoning classifications in terms of how we, like, regulate the land. When we get a requirement, we apply the zoning code. Then there's the county land use codes that are based on the actual use of the property, not on our zoning codes. Because some of these uses have been in existence for, you know, 50 or 100 years. They may not be permissible by zoning, like Kunsler, you know, a factory. But it's been there for a long time. So the land use codes actually show how buildings are being used. And the way that the land use codes are written, they get very confusing when there's a mixed-use structure. And so I don't know whether we'll be able to parse out whether there's two or three or four residential units in a mixed-use commercial structure. But I will, I will dive into that a little further and see whether I can get any info for the planning commission.
Yeah, I think even just a rough order of magnitude would be helpful for us of saying, "Will this add 50 units or will it add 150?"
Yeah, for me, is there any examples where other cities do that? And it's been successful?
So the, I think that there are. I try to look within Pennsylvania, and the, the regulations are, a lot of communities don't have regulations on this. Some do, and I've, I've reached out to a number of them. I think at the last meeting, the one that I mentioned was I talked to Gettysburg and Columbia most recently. Gettysburg was actually looking at moving away from allowing them in single-family structures, because they felt like that was, it was unfortunately targeting their historic districts, and they had entire historic swaths of their city that were no longer home-owned or occupied. So they actually were in favor of allowing one per property in multifamily structures. So no matter how many units are on the property, you know, they get one short-term rental. Now, they have a much, it's a different community there. It's not nearly as dense. They don't have the kinds of structures that we have here. But I, I'm definitely in conversation with different communities about that. And I, I know that the commission did ask me to look into more provisions around permitting them in multifamily structures. And just, I apologize, I just had a very busy couple of weeks, and I actually didn't get around to preparing a full presentation. But when I have that data all pulled together, I'm hoping by the next meeting, we can have a little more discussion on that.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Can I just add, as a point of clarification, I'm actually an Airbnb super host. I don't know what that means. I'm not going to put it on my tombstone. But I do know a fair amount about short-term rentals. And I know that Airbnb in particular is really having a problem with parties. They're cracking down on parties. It's actually not allowed. So if you think about a party, where is a party going to occur? More than likely, in a single-family home that has two or three bedrooms, where 12 people can show up, even though the host says, you know, only six. Where those of us that have apartments above commercial spaces, you know, it's a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom. It's not very big. So the chances of parties are just not going to occur, which is, which I think is very helpful and would certainly help the city. And I would say regarding, if you look at the zoning map, there again, I'm not an expert. Mr. Smith is, and he does a great job. I have a lot of respect for him. If you look at the overall zoning map, if you take out R1, R2, R3, and R4, I mean, it seems to me you're knocking out at least 80% of the potential Airbnbs and the, or short-term rentals in the whole city. So even if you have a lot of them in mixed-use in central business district, you're still, probably have still wiped out 80% in the whole city, which I, I think is great. I mean, from my standpoint, if I, I don't live in the city. I work in the city. My building in the city is worth a lot more than my house in the suburbs. But if I, you know, if I lived in the city, you know, I wouldn't really want somebody next to me that had a house that was having, you know, constant new people coming in all the time. And so... And so I think that's, that's great. I mean, whether they're from Colorado or from Lancaster, I think to eliminate them within the, the communities is really important because then you maintain that community atmosphere and the neighborhood atmosphere that's been developed over time. But I know when I presented mixed use on Walnut Street to the zoning board, not a single person came to oppose me because I'm on Walnut Street, right down from Lancaster Brewing Company, right across some tent express. I'm not really in a neighborhood. And actually, all the neighbors, I think, really liked me because I spent a lot of money on my building. So hopefully that helps clarify a couple of those issues.
I'd like to say something kind of like, maybe I should be on that side of the desk. But I myself, I think Mr. Schenk mentioned he had an Airbnb early on. I had started my Airbnb in 2014 and ran it for about six years. Covid kind of killed that. And so I can relate a lot to what you guys are saying. I was doing it as a homestay more. Love hosting people from all around the world. And as far as the parking issue, I think I, this is just shooting from the hip. I had maybe a third of my guests that didn't have vehicles. So I know that like whether that was an issue or not for my neighborhood, I don't think it was, given the, the makeup of my neighborhood. There's always ample parking on the street. So it, you know, it's just, it's interesting that, yeah, I think, and I live in an R3, R4 zone. So yeah, so I'm, I'm definitely seeing this whole issue from both perspectives. I want this to be a win-win situation for short term rental owners, especially the local ones. I get that. But also for the community at large. So I see like both sides of that coin.
I guess it's my turn again. I appreciate that comment and especially about community. When I had mine for many, many years, a lot of the folks that came here, they came for weddings at the Excelsior or at the Marriott. We had lots of guests who came to events at the Marriott, two blocks away, three blocks away. This current ordinance pretty much says no to any short term rental in, within blocks of downtown. The other thing that Douglas mentioned was maybe an idea is to allow short term rentals on the second floor in the central business district where there is, as, as everybody knows, there's, nobody has to provide one site parking for anything in that district. So now what are you going to do? Write an ordinance that carves out an exception, which makes the ordinance even more difficult and confusing to interpret? I've been around ordinances all my life. And one thing I've come to the conclusion of is, doesn't matter how clear the ordinance writer tries to be, it's always subject to interpretation. And it's usually subject to the interpretation, the, the first guy or gal is the zoning officer. And if he interprets differently than I do, then I'm out of luck or I argue it. And sometimes I win and sometimes I don't. And if push comes to shove, then it gets appealed, goes to court, all kinds of costs. So I just, the, the, the other, I just, well, first of all, community, that was the second point. In the, in where I have had mine up near Shippin, the, the neighbors all loved it. They used it when they had out of town family, that's where they stayed. With, we sometimes, and I, I'm understanding right now in that property, there are long term tenants. Because in one case, the people lived in a sparkler, sprinkler building and the sprinkler burst. So that's about a three or four or five months deal. They had to find someplace to live. So I, I recommended what I used to own. So it's those kinds of things, you know, helping other people, as Joel said. So I just ask you to use common sense. And I know, you know, in this thing, I think I said this before, the ordinance was, was published or whatever. And there was a timeframe, was it April or March, a deadline to be grandfathered? And then it was moved to another month? I mean, I think that rollout was rough at best, very confusing. And the city is going to respond back. If I make that comment to a city person, they're going to say, well, you know, it's all legal. It was all, all posted, all advertised appropriately. That's fine. But it, that, where's the common sense part in all this, where we stand right now? So anyway, I think that's all I've got for now. Thanks.
Okay, I got one more thing to say, and this is, Joel kind of mentioned it. There's a ton of buildings downtown that the upper floors are vacant and they've been vacant for a very long time. It is very difficult and expensive to bring them up to code. And Airbnb is a great incentive to bring them up to code. And if you get it an occupancy permit and you pull, pull all those permits, the city can tax it. So that's a win for the city. It's a win for the city that doesn't bring any housing off of the market. I realize there's an opportunity cost, cost that it could have been housing, but you gotta incentivize us to do something. Give us the incentive. I have, I have two buildings that have vacant upper floors. Yeah, give me a good incentive that works for me and I'll, and I'll pay taxes.
I like that he used the word incentive. And I do think that there's a potential here that short term rentals could be an avenue for increasing the amount of accessory dwelling units in the city. I don't like the idea of those things being permanently short term rentals. Like, I think the point of an incentive is to cause change. So if you can make more money off a short term rental and that justifies building a structure in your backyard, which you can habitate, maybe we put a timeline on that. I do think that there is a place for short term rentals. We definitely had to stop what was happening before. Like, what was happening before was we were taking housing off the market. But I do think there's a way for short term rentals to be used as a tool for us to increase housing in the city. Maybe not right up front, but in the long run.
I will say that a lot of people do give up on Airbnb once they realize how much of work it is. A lot of people will give up on their Airbnbs as, once they realize how much work it is. So like, if you have, like, if you're looking at Airbnb and you're like, yeah, I'm, I'm really good at interior design and I want to, I want to do this thing and make people happy and you, like, it's a lot of fun until you realize how much work it is and then you stop. There's been a lot of places that have been, that, that's happened too. So you can probably factor in a certain amount of housing happening just because of that. Like, it wasn't their intention, but you know, if you do get an occupancy permit that works for Airbnb, it, it does have to be, you know, you have to get a rental permit. So it has to be functional as an apartment. So I, I don't know.
I think, I think that's an interesting point. Like, I don't foresee a lot of these short term rentals being around for the next 20 years. There'll be a time. I mean, six years was kind of my cap.
Yeah. Yeah, just to reiterate that, I think there's a natural, because I'm on a Facebook Airbnb group, super host group, that there's a natural correction. So, you know, pick a number, there's, there's 10 Airbnbs in Lancaster City and everybody's like, oh my goodness, I can't believe how much people are making. So now there's 50. Well, now they were getting a hundred dollars a night, now they're getting 45 dollars a night. Now 40 of them go out of business, so they, it's not worth it. I thought I was going to make a hundred dollars a night. So there's just that, I mean, I have young guys that work for me and they freaking bought Bitcoin, you know, it was 50, you know, thousand and it's like, well, now it's whatever, 20 hovering around 20,000. It's like, they lost a lot of money, but they thought they were going to make money. So you know, that's going to ebb and flow over time. Yeah, there's, there was a time that everybody's jumping in and I think you were wise to say, hey, let's stop this, you know, from happening. But I know you didn't mean to hurt, you know, your friends and we're your friends and we're trying to do stuff. Unfortunately, after 40 years in business, I, I don't need to rent my, my unit above the restaurant. I don't have to. I mean, I'm very thankful to be in that position. But I'm not going to rent it on a monthly basis. It'll set vacant, you know, before I do that because it, it doesn't work out with the cleaning fees and, and, you know, well, it doesn't work out to, if I can't rent it for 7,000 a month, I, I'm just going to let it sit vacant and I'll bring friends and tour them through there. So you know, that's who you're hurting. Evan, you know, he lives behind me in shipping condos and I see him on Facebook and he's, he's rebuilding these windows from scratch and I marvel at his, you know, creativity. And it's like, he's, he's trying to do this to help people and he has great reviews. And he's like, I've been doing this for a long time and then the city changed the regulations. And it's like, so I think it's a balance. Yeah, you know, we want to limit, I think you've wiped out 80% of them. But just be aware that I'm a representative and so is Evan of probably 100 or 200 business owners that would do anything to help people. I had a guy, I said, oh, I got refugees coming in. He's like, let me know if they need groceries, I'll buy groceries and bring them over. I mean, that's, that's the community we live in. There's a lot of people that really want to help, but we also have to have money to be able to help people. And that's the situation that we're in.
Hi, Tereen again, just real quick. So my, my concern is, well, let me back up. So I have an Airbnb on West Chestnut. I was denied December 1st. And so now I can just do monthly rentals. My concern is that if we are really wiping out all these Airbnbs from people that have been operating Airbnbs for a little while now. My concern is the small business owners downtown. That's always been my concern because we've created this town, this community that, you know, it's like top 10 list of like great places to, to visit for a weekend or whatever, weddings. I also had a lot of people stay in my Airbnb because they were going to a wedding in town. So also some of my neighbors used it too for their family coming into town. But my, my thing is like the small business owners. We built this city up. Now, if you reduce the number of, if you reduce the supply, then the demand will go up. So then it's going to be really expensive for people to come to visit here and get a place to stay. Not everyone wants to stay in a hotel. I, I, I can't remember the last time I stayed in a hotel. Because we have a dog, we like to cook when we travel. So my, my big thing is that it's going to increase the price of Airbnbs when we limit the supply. And then I feel like the small business owners are going to be affected by that. So that's my point.
I'm feeling left out, so I'm going to speak to you. My name is Christine Hess and I also have an Airbnb in Lancaster and I'm in the process of getting shut down. I will be shut down for the ordinances. But I was just going to remind everybody that I feel like tourism has been an underrepresented part of what Lancaster is. I mean, it's not underrepresented. All of our Airbnb guests get a list when they check in of all of my favorite restaurants, favorite coffee shops, favorite things. And they always talk about how great and walkable our city is. Sorry, I'm nervous. And I think we're skipping over some of that because housing is an issue. Everybody agrees on that. But the people that come here to stay for a couple of days, and honestly, it's usually weekends, long weekends. We don't have a lot of rental during the week. So it's, you know, it's, but they're, they're eating and they're drinking and they're partying. I'm not partying, they're whatever, going to shows and doing all the things that people do when they're on vacation. When in normal life, of course, you're not doing all that stuff. So you're not spending all the money. So I feel like we're, we're kind of skipping over the revenue that, that all these people bring to Lancaster. And that, that's a serious thing. You know, over Covid, I mean, we were so busy because people did not want to be in public spaces. They wanted their own place they could be and not, you know, share an elevator. And I don't think that's going away. I mean, people are just more aware of that and they want their private space. I mean, you know, anyway, we make it very clear to our guests as well that our neighbors are really important to us and they cannot make noise or cause any problems. And we have zero complaints from our neighbors. They're actually good friends of ours. I feel very, that I have to answer to them. So it's never like, have a good party, you know, like, there's none of that. And anyway, we've also hosted people that were out of luck. Like, we had somebody who had major surgery, could not do steps. So they stayed in our ground floor Airbnb and they were so thankful because they only needed two or three months, you know, to recover. And you can't find an apartment for three months, you know, like, anyway. So I just wanted to add that whole tax revenue thing because Lancaster City residents are really taxed heavily. So if anything we can do to like, you know, take a little pressure off that, I think is a good thing.
I got a question for you, Mr. Smith. So I know that there's Airbnbs that have been grandfathered into this thing. And part of why the zoning hearing board is seeing influx of, I guess it's variances, is because they weren't grandfathered in. Is there a way that the city can somehow, I guess, ease, at least a pain for that group of people? And like, if you can prove that you had been operating for X amount of time, there being a window for them to get and apply for a variance? Well, I'm not a lawyer, that sounds legally dubious to me. But you know, I, we have been exploring nearly every pathway that we have been recommended around regulation. I've had, you know, numerous discussions with our solicitor. I believe part of what I presented last time that I failed to mention was some of what was reported back from our solicitor around regulating based on residency. If you're a resident, you can have a short term rental. If you're not, you can't. Or if you live in the building, you can have a short term rental in your building. And if you don't, you can't. Or proximity of one short term rental versus to another. So for instance, like firearm shops and alcohol sales are oftentimes limited in terms of the distance from a school and other things like that. So we thought maybe there was legal basis for us to require distances between short term rentals, which would prevent some of the density in the neighborhoods that we've seen. That also, all of those regulations I just mentioned, I was told are not legally feasible in Pennsylvania. Even the ones that are being administered in other communities, like in Atlanta, the residency requirement was delayed and it's rolled out and is currently in litigation around private property rights violations. So there are a lot of ideas out there, but the city is also trying to be strategic about what we take up. And that is unfortunately part of the reason that the initial regulations were somewhat blunt in their application because our tools are limited and also blunt. We are open to being, you know, I think we're trying to be open minded about how this gets readjusted. And I really appreciate folks coming out tonight to add additional context and detail and that you all get to hear that as well. You know, I probably have a lot more of these conversations than you do. So I, I'm really, I really do appreciate folks coming to talk about this, this evening. So anyway, to get back to your question, I have, I, I'm skeptical that that would be permissible because, you know, where would you stop? Any regulation could then be sort of undone retroactively. I think when council makes, passes a law, they intend that to be enforced going forward. There is legal precedent around grandfathering in Pennsylvania that's very strong in the courts. Once you have a permitted right, permitted use or you've been conducting your use for a long time and there's no record of it being disallowed, you are entitled to that use basically forever. Unless it's fully abandoned, crystal clear, decades have gone by, you've not done anything with it. And even then, the courts are still somewhat liberal in terms of allowing a use to continue on a property. So I, I think it's tough to say, but I, I'm happy to forward the question to our solicitor as well and just get a legal answer on that.
All right. The only reason I asked is just because like, I am also guilty of not necessarily knowing all the laws of the city all at once. And I think that it's sounding like there are some individuals who didn't necessarily know that they needed to apply for certain permits and permissions. And I don't know, I guess I'm just trying to give some leeway to certain groups as we navigate this whole situation, because we, I, I do feel like we had to put a hard stop to what was happening in terms of housing being taken off the market. And slowly, that would have dismantled our community, in my opinion. I'm not a, you need long-term residents in order to have an actual community. But I do think that there's some capacity to use it as a tool, and maybe there is a select group of people that can be worked with just out of sheer, if anything, just like, we get it, you didn't know. But I do understand that that's complicated.
So some of these things probably could have, there's some very reasonable things that probably should have been allowed at the zoning hearing boards, but not everybody on the zoning hearing board was super receptive to some pretty, pretty reasonable arguments. So that's kind of a bummer. I think that would be my personal perspective on what happened with my hearing. So. Would you agree, Douglas?
Well, I'll add two things. One is, I want to encourage us to be forward-looking in our policy setting and not necessarily get caught up in playing Monday morning quarterback, whatever they call that, I'm not a sports guy, really. Because that, unfortunately, that has already happened, you know, and we need to sort of move on to the next stage. In terms of the zoning hearing board, it's a complicated question you asked, Evan, but I mean, generally, the zoning hearing board is supposed to be administering relief when there is some sort of legitimate hardship, you know, that, that's sort of the legal standard that's supposed to be applied. And so when that hardship's not reached, you know, the variance gets denied. They also hear other requests, like special exceptions, which are a different animal. So, I mean, I don't know that it's their place to approve the, the variances unless there is that legal hardship. Part of what I'd said to the zoning hearing board is that a policy reevaluation should happen here. This is the policy setting board that recommends the city council to amend the zoning, zoning code. So I'm glad we're doing that, you know, we're trying to follow through on that. But, yeah, it's kind of hard for me to say, you know, I don't want to make judgments on the zoning hearing board's decisions. That's, they're a quasi-judicial body, they get to make their own decisions. Sometimes the city weighs in on what they should do, but it's ultimately left up to them. They have their own solicitor. Sometimes the city and the zoning hearing board even get into legal spats, which, you know, we're not unfamiliar with, because the city and the zoning hearing board actually may not align, or may not agree on things. So, yeah.
I was just going to maybe clarify in a more simplistic way, Evan, sorry if I'm speaking out of term. What Evan did is operated an Airbnb thinking he was legally allowed to do that, and somehow didn't know about the regulations and didn't know he had to come to present to the city. Had he known that, he would have been grandfathered in, but he missed that window, whatever it was, and now he's denied. I can tell you, as an architect over 40 years, there's this definition of transient housing. I've never dealt with it. I mean, I don't think anybody in the city applied, I mean, maybe a few people applied for transient housing. I don't even know what that is, and I'm, I'm a licensed professional in the state of Pennsylvania. So in my case, I started way before COVID renovating a attic space at 324 East Walnut Street, raised the roof up to 11 feet. I mean, don't tell my wife, I mean, I probably spent over half a million dollars, because I wanted to showcase for what I do as an architect, and I'm like, well, I'll be able to, you know, rent it out on a nightly or, you know, two-night minimum basis. And I didn't know the city was changing all these regulations. And so had I known, possibly I could have gone, but when I went to the zoning board, basically, at that point, the answer was no, no matter what, you know, you present, you know? And so it was just no, 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 no. And I have proof that I bought a domain name, I emailed my engineer and said I'm going to do a short-term rental way before the city enacted the ordinance. So I'm not actually so concerned for myself, but I know that somebody down the street on Walnut Street was doing the same thing for a few years, and she called me up, she said, oh my goodness, I didn't know, the city changed the regulations? And I said, yeah. And, and so she went and appealed, and she got denied. And these are very nice people that love the city. And I think if you even could get people to verify even now that they'd been operating or had a building permit, and we're going to do a short-term rental, and you approved all of them, you're not going to have a saturation of Airbnb. You know, just stop it at this point. No more Airbnbs, somebody comes in tomorrow or the next day, probably half of those Airbnbs you approve are going to go out of business, because people don't want to clean every two days, and they're tired of it. And then you'd be like, hey, you know, we don't have that many Airbnbs or short-term rentals in the city, and we are a city, last I remember, that's based on tourism. So we really want people to come here, very wealthy people from New York City and Baltimore and Philadelphia, and spend lots of money, and then go back home. So Airbnb gives us the opportunity, or short-term rental gives us the opportunity to do that.
So I guess we're completed with the public participation. Now we will adjourn this meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, before the motion, yeah, before that. I do want to make comment. Yeah, I got a real much clearer education on short-term rentals, and, you know, based on the content that you presented tonight. So it was very helpful for me. And, you know, some of the arguments certainly sounded doable. So, okay, we do have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, sorry, just to clarify, or did anyone attend for a public comment on another matter this evening? Okay.
Okay.
I will re-move to adjourn.
A second.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting at 7:08. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None? 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 None?